I call the Hazel Park Board of Education meeting to order at 6:01 PM on June 16, 2025 at the Administration Building. Roll call, please.
Beaton?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Fortress?
Fox?
Here.
LaFramboys?
Here.
Rattie?
Here.
Hinton?
Here.
We all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Support.
Heidi motion to accept the agenda. Monica, second. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
LaFramboys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Next, we have Special Order of Business, Hazel Park Community Coalition Presentation.
Good afternoon, everybody. How are you?
Very good. Thank you.
My name is Tom.
We take you by the microphone.
Get this microphone right here. Take this one if you want to walk. No, you can take this one.
Take it and walk.
Unfortunately, our parent, our people at home won't be able to hear you. So that's why you need to have a mic.
Thank you. I'm restless. I don't stay on one case. I represent the Community Coalition. My name is Shawna Williams. For those of you who have not yet met me, over this short presentation, I just want to be able to go over a few things, and those include our mission, our vision, and the role of HPCC, both in the community and within the district. I want to also be able to provide some insight into our strategies and how we do what we do, including engaging our youth, our families, the different partners that we have to do this work. Also want to make sure that we at least review the importance of our community coalition-based approach, and that includes the sector collaboration and the community sectors that make up our organization. And then last but not least, I hope this is the last time, this is not the last time that I'm in front of you all, so I hope to be able to preview some additional topics that I can come back and present on at a later time. So the first is the mission and the vision, and our mission is to really lead and facilitate data-driven, community-based initiatives with the goal of making sure that we're empowering youth to live drug-free lifestyles. Specifically, we're focused on youth in fifth through 12th grade. And then our vision says that we want to be a part of the community that helps our youth thrive, make healthy choices, which include avoiding substances. Who are we? For those of you who are not familiar with our story, we came to be in the fall of 2016 when there was a call made about an overdose in the community. From that call, Sander Levin was activated and connected with the Alliance of Coalitions for Healthy Communities. And as a result, that partnership was used to implement the Communities That Care framework to address community issues related to substance use and mental health. So what do we do? We collect data. Thanks to our partnership with the district, we're able to get some direct insights into MiFi data and other survey data that helps us understand what the issues are and that helps inform our strategies and how we attack those issues. We also have tailored and evidence-based prevention programs, and they are designed to reduce substance use. So in the past, there used to be scare tactics that were used to say like, you see this car that crashed on prom night? Like, don't drink and drive. Well, that's not necessarily a science-based approach to substance misuse. We also have educational workshops and trainings, and those are tailored for youth, parents, and community members on mental wellness, substance misuse, and protective factors. Just a shameless plug, we actually have a Parent University Workshop coming up on June 26 at 5:30 at the high school, and it's on mental health facilitated by Easter Seals. So please come if you're available. And then last but not least, we also focus on community engagement, and that just includes all of the sectors that make up our community, from the schools to the businesses to the nonprofit orgs to the youth-serving orgs. And so why it matters, this is a glimpse of some of the data that we've been collecting. We have a couple of things that we're focused on. One primarily is substance misuse, and what you'll see here is that from, in the 23-24 school year, we have students reporting that they used marijuana at the high school level at the rate of 9.2%. If you compare that to the county, which is at 8.6%, you'll see that we're higher than our counterparts. The same for tobacco. So the high school students are reporting usage of 2.8%, while Oakland County is at 0.8%. And then lastly, you also have this last row here, which is vaping, and the header is missing from there, so I apologize. So this dataset is around vaping, and so 9% of our high school students are reporting vaping use compared to 8.5% of the county. So you'll see that underscores the need for some tactical and, you know, just overall outreach to make sure that we're empowering students to understand the impact of their choices. Our approach is based off of a framework, and it's data-driven. As I said before, it's community-based. It was developed by the Center for Substance Abuse, which is CSAP, and that was done in collaboration with SAMSA, which stands for the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration. The Strategic Prevention Framework, which is also referred to as SPF, is the idea that certain factors or variables contribute to substance misuse, and that could be things like poverty, that could be things like mental health, so on and so forth, that makes you more prone to have these undesirable behaviors that you kind of fall into. And the SPF serves as a guide for communities and states to assess, build, develop, implement, and evaluate, and those are the phases in which we're working through as a coalition. So what have we done this year? This is the first time that I've been in front of you, but we've been pretty busy. So we've distributed over 1,000 drug lock bags, and we've done that through the Hometown Huddle, through the Resource Fair, through different things in the city. We were at Lunch with Santa, we were at Memorial Day Parade, and so we've been able to push out resources to the community. We've established a drug deactivation station at the police department, so if you're looking for a safe way to break down your overage of prescriptions pills, you can stop by the police department and pick up a free pouch. We've been, we've had some outreach conducted with students in partnership with the Alliance, so we've done a focus group, got some pretty interesting insights from students who've shared things like, we see vapes on the ground, and so we pick them up and use them. Like, it took everything for me to not say, "Oh." So those are the type of insights that we get from students. We've also facilitated Narcan training for graduating seniors with the idea that these young people are going out into the world, and we want to equip them with some life-saving skills. And then we've also facilitated or delivered a nourished workshop, wellness workshop, for ninth graders within the health department or within the health curriculum in the high school. What's ahead? So we are happy to be a part of the summer school program this year, offering a few enrichment workshops, and that includes the Photo Voice Project, which is going to allow students to settle on a theme, go out into the community, capture photos aligned to that theme, and then tell a community story based on those two things. We're also going to be holding a social norms workshop, which is going to present them with some Oakland County data to actually say like, you don't have to do what your friends are doing. You think everybody's smoking marijuana? Well, actually, the data says that 70, and I'm making this number up, but like 74% of students are not smoking marijuana, so you don't have to do what everyone else is doing. It allows them to take that data and then create a campaign that will either produce posters or art that can be displayed around the district. And then there's a Hallways of Hope Workshop, which is kind of like an artsy mosaic-type activity where you make a commitment, and it's this beautiful piece that can be on display in hallways. And then lastly, and my most favorite, is an improv workshop, which will be facilitated by Go Comedy. And the goal of that is just to kind of take some of those transferable skills like public speaking, or resilience, or self-confidence, and say, this is a fun space to kind of exercise those things, but you can apply that in life, you can apply that in school, so on and so forth. As I mentioned earlier, we also have the Parent University Workshop coming up on June 26, and that's called Safe at Home. It's going to be at the high school, and we're going to partner with a couple of different organizations to make sure that family have some key items to stay safe over the summer. And then I hope to come back to you all to take a deeper dive into the data. What you all just saw was a snapshot of it, but we have more that we can talk and discuss and really make sure that we're aligned on like, what our issues are and what the next steps look like. And then I also like to talk a little bit more about what our planned services could look like for the upcoming school year. So that is all that I have for you. I appreciate you all adding me to the agenda and taking the time out. And if you want to get in contact with me, I'm located at the high school, and I also have an email address that you can reach out to. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Shannon, is your Safe at Home Workshop at the high school, or is it at the junior high?
It's at the junior high. Yes. And I can make sure you get a flyer.
Make a comment that, you know, I've been here all the way through the Coalition. Dr. Dolmetsch has been that as well, other people in the room were a part of that in the very beginning and facilitated that, and wow, the growth that has happened to kind of identify some of this is just fantastic. Thank you so much for being a part of Hazel Park Schools and helping us get the grant. You know, if people are watching and wondering where that finance comes, we have a, we have a grant with the community, with Oakland County, but then we also have a grant, sorry, we also have a federal grant that we've received and earned, which continues to help us grow. So kudos, you're a rock star.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Yes, thank you very much. That was a great report and very informational, and you know your job.
Thank you.
Very knowledgeable about it. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Could I remind everyone on behalf of Brad to please talk into the microphone so that they can hear?
Yes, thank you.
Because if you could bring yours down too, I'm sorry. Your microphone.
Couldn't hear me?
Yeah, it's hard to hear unless you talk directly into it.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm just, I want to hear your lovely voice when I go home tonight.
Okay. We're up to public comments, so I just have a statement that this is a business meeting of the Board of Education held in public, not a public community meeting. The Board has provided two opportunities during the meeting for the public to address the Board respectfully. Is anyone wishing to speak? I have no papers. No one? All right. I'm going to close public comments, moving on to an approval for the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written. Support.
Okay. Motion by Heidi, support by Debbie, to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Fortress?
Yes.
LaFramboys?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Hinton?
Moving on to, oh, yes. I didn't say yes, did I? Moving on to new business, 24-25 final budget approval action item.
I move the Board of Education accept, I move the Board of Education approve the 2024-25 budget as presented. Support.
Motion by Heidi, support by Monica, to accept the 24-25 final budget. Any discussion? No? Roll call, please.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
LaFramboys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Need a motion to approve the 25-26 budget.
I move the Board of Education approve the 25-26 budget as presented. Support.
Motion by Heidi, support by Monica, to accept, approve the 25-26 budget.
Roll call? Fortress?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
LaFramboys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. The next thing on the agenda is the administrative moves. Need a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the administration transitions for the 25-26 school year as presented with a savings of at least $106,747.53. Support.
Okay. Move by Heidi and second by Monica to approve the administrative moves. Can one of you read what they are?
The current high school principal will transition into the high school principal position. The current junior high principal will move into the role of the high school assistant principal. The current K through 12 supervisor will assume the role as junior high principal, and the current K through 12 supervisor position will be eliminated for teaching and learning.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion?
I would like to, if I could, just simple so that the community is aware of that if they didn't see last week. We are currently faced with making reductions as far away from students as we possibly can, and so in order to do that, when I returned and Mrs. McHenry was retiring, we took that opportunity to, one, to remove the position at the district office for supervision of K-12. Not that we don't need it, but that we've got to find ways to reduce spending. Therefore, number one, we picked a great choice who's here tonight to become our new high school principal, Mr. Demus, and his family is here as well, and a long time coming, and we're really excited for him to step in that role. And Mrs. Kaminsky, who is fortunately a downtown this evening or would have been here as her son receives Mr. Hockey for the State of Michigan at a red carpet black tie event this evening, so she is off. That will be a great addition as well, especially with all the teacher work that she has done. And we are super excited that Ms. Beach will go to the high school to support the instructional program and a great team member as well. So we hope that this will be helpful as we continue to move forward in the district in a positive manner with a reduction in cost for our district.
Thank you for those details. Roll call?
Fortress?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
LaFramboys?
I'm not sure if some of these partnerships, but I'm going to say yes and see how it goes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Next, a motion for athletic director.
Sorry.
Motion for athletic director?
I move the Board of Education approve the athletic department transition for the 25-26 school year as presented with a cost savings of $94,165. Support.
May I go ahead and chat?
Okay. Motion by Heidi for the athletic director and support by April, but isn't this athletic department?
The athletic department transitions is what the motion is on our sheet.
Oh.
So yes.
Athletic director. Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd love to share again, as we as a team looked for ways to have a savings to the district, we will be combining the Director of Communications with the athletic director with an increased salary for performance of both positions, and then the current athletic director will be moving to the role of District Council. Our Promise Zone Navigator will be Promise Zone Navigator slash Athletic Department support, and I outlined for all of you the movement of that. That salary since last June was 49,875. What the difference was is how it was funded. It went from an Oakland County grant where we only funded, where we paid 29,000, to the Ballmer grant, which pays 45,000 of that salary. So the salary has been the same, and so for the 25-26 school year, an increase of additional 5,000 because they will take care of all junior high athletics, the Promise Zone Navigator, all the junior high after activities and during the day, and will support the summer and next year to the events because clearly one person can't get there and do all the communications. Then we would increase our district intern, who's been with us for several years, to support the Director of Communication Athletics to Communications Assistant, and give them $19 an hour, up to only 30 hours. This, we believe, this combination will be extremely successful. We're already having conversations about how to work together, and I believe that is also $100,000 savings to the school district as well.
I have a question. The 45,000 is Ballmer for 25-26. Is that just for one year?
No, it is for three years. So yes, thank you.
So two more because we did one last year and then this year.
Yes. And then hopefully we'll get it again. We will see. I've already reached out to Ballmer to get a meeting with them about some other things, and I'm hoping that we can continue to have a great partnership with them to support community schools as well as our district and other activities.
So this person is the athletic department support person, not assistant? Will he be called support person?
It actually should be assistant athletic directors, what was on my pieces. I mean, you know, whatever you want to call it is fine by us. The job description was Promise Zone Navigator slash Assistant Athletic Director. I don't know why I missed this change, and I apologize for that, because they really are. They're running all of the athletics for the junior highs, scheduling, being there, supervising those, and then helping Chuck as necessary, which is a lot because we ask that when anything's going on, that one of our athletic people are present when we're in the district to help not only make sure it's run well, but make sure that the officials are welcomed in, it's set up, kids that need items are needed items. There was a question on, does this mean security? No, we still have to have security at events.
Okay. So you're going to be calling him the person Athletic Assistant?
Yes.
For the district?
Yes.
Okay.
I have issues with the fact that, you know, Mr. Patterson is doing this job, and he was, he moved into this job to transition also to be the Leo Counsel and the Athletic And I'm not going to say struggled, but there's been a lot of drama in the athletic department, and I'm just wondering why this transition is any different than the other transition that we did. I just, I feel like we're doing apples to apples when we really need a strong person in the athletic department to really lead that.
Well, I first would say to you that we eliminated the District Council when our Athletic Director left and did not function as District Council, but functioned for support of FOIA, which I've always done in the past myself and would take FOIA back on necessary. But that was always told, it was an interim position, and we believe that we have a strong person in Chuck. I believe the coaches are already looking at following him. He's done the position before. It was very positive, and so that is our recommendation. It reduces the cost significantly, and it was shared before I left with everyone that the position would be posted and not be paid at the $120,000 rate that it was before. But if you go back to the PowerPoint presentations, we reduced several positions because we knew financially we had to make shifts, and that is why Mr. Patterson was moved to that position.
Anybody else? Hey, roll call?
Fortress?
No.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
LaFramboys?
No.
Fox?
Yes.
Rattie?
Epstein for family conflict.
Hinton?
No.
I guess I would ask then to the Board what you expect us to do with the athletics because everybody's waiting.
So failed. Motion failed.
Right.
We'll have to discuss.
That is, I have to tell you, that is the recommendation of the administrative team as a way to save $100,000.
That is my concern of why we don't want to save money.
It's not a matter of not saving money to me. It's about if, why switch him into the position when we already have another admin doing the position now with Mr. Patterson?
We would, I just don't, it just, I would rather see a fresh face come in and revamp that whole area. We believe, we believe we have that team there, and I have to say it would not be the recommendation to, that's not the administration's recommendation, and the positions are there. And so normally, we support the administrative team when they make recommendations of staffing changes, especially at the savings of 100 grand.
That was said at our one meeting too as well with that gentleman, that if we don't support our admins' recommendations, then we look silly. And it was also said out loud by our board resident that we would be dumb if we didn't.
We now will be at the point of not having an athletic department put together for another month, which will be devastating to our coaches.
And I get what you're saying about a new face, but we tried that route. It didn't, no one would accept the job, so.
And right now with our budget, any way we can save money seems like.
Well, we also had the assistant when we had the junior Vikings, and we don't have that anymore. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that I just.
I wish we would have had this conversation at Committee of the Whole, but, which is why we have the Committee of the Whole. However, I need to let you know, this reduces a full-time position, which expends what we need to expand, with the understanding that we would review this in February. Mr. Plennis has done it before, and we have a solid plan in place with a savings of 100 grand to the school district at a time when we are 300 grand in deficit. We will continue to make those recommendations of those positions because that is the only way you're going to walk yourself out of deficit.
Okay.
I just have a quick question, follow-up question. Where does it say that we revisit this in February? On the very bottom?
Yes, that we would revisit this in February. That would give us time to either, one, continue with this because we need to save money, or two, go out for peace. You have to give that department a leadership group to go forward. This will cause a lot of chaos right now for that department of people that are looking for this group support.
And what, are you saying Mr. Patterson's not in that leadership role currently and can't remain there?
I think it's inappropriate to talk about a specific person, but no, that person was known that we would not spend 120 grand on that position, and that if they wanted to apply, they could apply at the 60,000 to 85,000 versus spending 120,000.
And us as a board moved him already to what he was prior, even though we eliminated that.
When did we move him? That's part of this, this motion, is it not?
I believe that we heard from individuals that this board would like him in that attorney position. We will bring additional cuts to the board next month, but when you were talking about renewing, you renewed him as District Council, not Athletic Director. You renewed his contract while I was gone.
So I'm going to rescind my vote because I did not see would revisit in February 26. I did not read that very last line because there's 250 pages of stuff we had to read.
Yes.
And I want somebody that has experience because we keep getting people that, I know he's been a sportswriter, I think he's a great person, it's not a personal thing, it's, we have, we continue to have people, and the policy says we have to have people that are qualified. So that was my, that was my thing, but if we're going to look at it in February 26, I will rescind my vote.
Would you like a new motion since we already clarified that it failed?
Okay. A motion to rescind my vote to pass the Athletic Director.
Oh, no, no, no. I mean, do you want me to remake the motion and it's?
Oh, you?
Yeah, just to, I mean, if we just want to re-vote.
Our attorney's shaking his head, yes.
Well, I would have to do it, wouldn't I? Because I made the original.
The motion would be made by anybody.
So we can start over.
I would bring a motion, just bring another, a separate motion.
A brand-new motion?
Before we do that, can, Chuck, will you come and tell us your experience, please?
I think. I think, right now, we don't have anything to discuss, so I think we should.
Oh, okay.
So, we can open it for discussion.
Okay, we got to wait then. Hold on, please.
Okay. I move the Board of Education approve the athletic department transitions for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented with the savings of at least ninety-four thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Okay, motion. It's you second.
Darren.
Darren?
Thank you.
I just don't want us to discuss without.
Nope, you're right.
May I have a, Madam President, may I make a statement?
Can I say something first?
Yes, please.
I just, I, my experience and is that Chuck will do a wonderful job. He is, he is one of these guys that I can go up to him and, you know how you first meet somebody? You just know he, his heart's into it, just like our dear friend, Mr. Chad, uh, that was a longtime teacher. And when you watch him at the events or at graduation, those kids are giving him high-fives and slapping his hands and jumping up. I mean, he's going to have all kinds of respect, and, uh, that's what I'm looking for. And, Madam President, you're right, uh, we need to have somebody that knows these kids. You're exactly right about it, um, because we need to have that back in our, in our city. Not outsiders who don't know Hazel Park and our kids. And I think that, uh, and it's nothing against Mr. Patterson because I love Mr. Patterson too. He's a good guy, um, but he's going to go on to other things and, uh, hopefully more fun things for him. But, uh, Chuck is right up in there, and, uh, with highest regards and highest respect for him, and that's all I have to say.
My only comment would be is that I would find it inappropriate to ask somebody to come up and give their experience. We'd be happy to send a resume to you.
Okay.
It might be more appropriate. You can choose as a board. I'm just suggesting that's, that's not something that normally takes place.
Okay. All right. So, you did, or I just wondered, so I'll, you can just send the resume as wonderful, please.
Yes, if the board like it, we will send it soon. Maybe tomorrow.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor to.
Yes.
Uh-huh. Motion by April and second by Darren to, uh, approve the hiring of the athletic director. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Beaton?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
No.
Lepron Boys? Rete?
Abstained for family conflict.
Hinton?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one. Um, next is attorney reimbursement. No, next is super and co, superintendent contract reimbursement.
I move the Board of Education approve one-third payment per year of the superintendent, superintendent for accrued vacation hours and three thousand dollars for merit performance-based pay not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Support.
Okay, motion by Heidi, support by Monica for the superintendent contract reimbursement pay. Any discussion?
May I briefly, in the, um, President Hinton?
Yes.
May I go ahead?
Sorry.
No, no, that's okay. I just wanted to ask permission. Um, I just wanted to state that in the past, this is part of my contract, and the board president would just confirm to the business office, and I felt that it's best, especially in this time, that we bring every single piece forward so that we can make sure that it's crystal clear and that it's, um, done. And, uh, President Hinton agreed that she felt that it was best approved by the board, and so thus, that's why we brought this through.
So, any discussion?
And this is for the twenty-four, twenty-five FOIA?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, please.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Lepron Boys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Next, we have the attorney reimbursement. We need a motion.
I move the Board of Education approve the administration legal representation reimbursement not to exceed five thousand dollars as presented.
Support.
We have a motion by Heidi, support by Monica for the attorney reimbursement to Dr. Croupy.
Madam President, may I say something?
Yep.
Um, I just, I wasn't here as a board member a year ago, and I will be, just to let everybody know, I will be abstaining from that motion. I've already, uh, have checked with our attorney to make sure that was a correct response, um, and that is a correct response. Um, I don't feel comfortable in voting for something that I wasn't in closed session with, and I wasn't here to, uh, do the original vote. So, if you hear me abstain, that's why.
Thank you for that comment. Anybody else?
I think along the lines of Mr. Fox's statement, as someone who also was not here, um, maybe this will come out in a discussion, and if somebody is able to answer the question, that's perfectly fine, but we have recorded and approved minutes that already authorize this attorney reimbursement. So, I'm not sure why we're here to vote, to confirm a vote.
I would have to agree with that, actually.
So, my comment is that the minutes show, um, five thousand dollars. It does not say for who or for what reason.
We, as a board though, who was in closed session, know exactly what it was for and for who. This, I mean, we can't come out of closed session and say for who, so.
Yes, you can.
We didn't.
President Hinton, may I speak?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I believe that everybody on the board knows exactly who those were for, for the two administrators, and it says administrators. So, with that same effect, any two administrators could potentially ask for that reimbursement because the board has approved for two, two individuals. I just happen to be the only one that has and did present, um, a receipt earlier and was told it need to be approved by the board, which is why I'm here today. I have unfortunately exceeded over fifteen thousand dollars with attorney fees, given the investigation that was completed, and we knew that was coming last year when some things were happening in closed session.
Mr. Patterson, because we already approved it before in our prior meeting, why is it that she has to have it approved again?
Uh, being privy to the decision made, I think she gave her the sort of fact that required that information be sought.
It was asked for it to be.
No, I was told when I submitted my receipt that I had to come to the board, so thus I did, but it wasn't in the motion. It was.
I guess I'm just curious, if we already approved this prior, why we have to approve it again?
It was approved for a different reason.
Right.
It was just approved for attorney fees.
You can't just approve money and leave it sit there until an administrator needs it.
That's exactly what we did.
But that's not the reason why we approved the money. When we were in closed session, it was related to a different topic.
It was approved in the minutes as legal fees.
For two administrations with no, nobody identified.
So, then she just identified that any two administrators could have done it then. She just so happens to be the one that's doing it. She is one of two. One more person could do it.
Mrs. Hinton, may I make one more comment?
Yes.
The reason that we requested, uh, for myself and another person was because of statements that were made that would have caused us to use legal counsel with the accusations that were occurring, which continues to be accusations, so it is the same topic, um, same thing, which is board accusations that would cause us to have to get legal, um, fee. I was caused to have to get legal representation to identify myself, which is why we asked for that, and I'm, I will, I will rest my comments.
So, what just happened with the investigation, free legal services available to superintendents through the Michigan Superintendent Association, and you were off on leave with pay. There wasn't a reason for an attorney until possibly maybe when the investigation or you had your turn to speak. Because there was no harm, you were off with pay. It wasn't a punishment. It was, it was kind of a protection thing, so you, I don't want to go into all that, but you had legal representation for free. So, I'm available. Um, I just do the vote.
Ms. Hinton, I'd like to respond to that comment if I could.
Okay.
MASA provides two thousand dollars over your life as a superintendency. I have ten years. Two thousand dollars, um, didn't even represent the first calls that I had to make from him when I was put off, and we all know in this environment, when this is happening to superintendents everywhere, um, that is a concern for them. It is, two thousand does not cover anything for you, um, and unfortunately, it is a great cost that you have to do because we're protecting our career. And while, um, it may be a protection for me in the view of the board, it is not. It is a detriment on my career for other places, which is why you have to protect it with an attorney to support you.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'll just read from our notes. You're supposed to follow our notes. We read our, our board meeting, our minutes. Motion made by Baldwin, supported by Rete, that the Board of Education approve the administrative legal representation not to exceed five thousand dollars each, limited to two. It's pretty vague, so maybe going forward when we make, uh, motions, we are more clear. But to me, that reads one way. It's, it seems like it's already been resolved, like, uh, April said, in my mind, but I'm just reading our minutes.
Let's see, that, I, we speak through our minutes, and those minutes do not give details. So.
But they were approved.
For a different reason.
No, I mean, the, the minutes themselves were approved, so.
Right, right. Oh, okay, okay.
At, at the time that these were presented and made official, the board not only approved that motion, but they also then approved the minutes.
Okay. So, anybody else? All right, roll call, please.
Fortress?
No.
Rete?
Yes.
Beaton?
And again, for the sake of upholding a vote that's already been made, I will say yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Lepron Boys?
No.
Fox?
Abstained.
Hinton?
No, so, motion fails three to three and one abstaining? I never, I guess that's how you say that. Uh, moving on to transportation director. Motion for transportation director who's stipend.
I move the Board of Education approve a one-year salary increase for the supervisor of transportation not to exceed eighty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars.
Support.
All right, motion by April, second by Monica to, for the transportation director increase, salary increase.
Ms. Hinton, may I speak?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, our other, uh, directors make considerably more, and I see down here it says supervisor. She actually is the director of transportation. Um, when I returned, uh, which is just a couple of weeks ago, I met with her immediately, and she said that she was going to retire and, which would be devastating to us. Um, there were some questions about what does that transportation director do? Well, she does all the scheduling of transportation for field trips, for, uh, work for our students with special needs, for all of our special ed, for GSRP, transfer, uh, transporting to Chrysler, transporting to O-Tech, now, uh, Web, and she also is the dispatcher. So, when we decided to bring it back in for cost savings, there was a dispatcher approved, and she took that on as well. For a long-term employee, for the amount of years that she's been here, um, giving her the stipend to get us through next year and then to post it in the January, February timeframe is well worth every dime because we would probably have to have a dispatcher and a transportation director at this time. She's an amazing employee. Um, she would, she's significantly missed, but losing someone at this time, just like our, you know, we need to get those positions in place.
Any discussion?
I guess I think twenty percent is very high. Um, I just, Chuck is doing two positions, and he did not get a twenty percent increase. Um, I just think it's very high. I'm, I would go ten percent.
Yeah, I think this is setting a precedent, um, for future, somebody else who's been with the district a long time, and the next couple of years is probably going to be retiring. Are we going to give him a twenty percent increase for his final year, two years, uh, year, I'll say year? Um, I just, and again, I brought up the nineteen percent pay increase. I just think that's out of line.
May I, uh, President, may I respond to Mrs. Lepron Boys?
Yes.
Um, so, just so you know, this isn't something we would normally do. Unfortunately, I didn't return until two weeks ago, which at the time she announced, and it's the point of the year where, again, this is a, this is very different circumstances, and I think we haven't continued to consider things very differently depending on the situation. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Anybody else?
I also feel like, looking at her current pay rate, that the fact that she took on two roles anyways, I don't feel like maybe her pay should have been so low. I feel like for one year, let's get it going, get, I mean, she's done a great job already. Why not do it, put it up for next year, and then revisit that amount? Because that's not saying that next year we have to pay that amount for her position.
Yeah, I think I appreciate, I definitely, I should say, I think I appreciate the, the worry of precedent setting, but given the date and that this is effectively for retention, I, if we had to post a director of transportation and a separate dispatcher position tomorrow morning, I don't see how we come in less than eighty-two thousand, eighty, eighty-three thousand dollars essentially.
I guess I didn't.
I get it, but knowing that, that we need that to move us along for the year and then have some ability for her to train an incoming director, I, I see the value in that more than I see worry in having to post two separate positions and, and running into starting the school year without a director or a dispatcher.
And like I said, I have no doubt that she does a fabulous job and can manage sweet like she does, but I just think twenty percent is a little steep. I mean, you're, you're talking over a thousand dollars a month extra you're giving her. That's a lot.
Does Miss Brew work all summer?
Yes.
And is there bus routes in the summertime for special ed?
Yes.
We approved it with the ESY.
Yes.
Chessa oversees the buses, been getting ready to be examined and ready for the evaluation of the buses where the state comes out and marks whether or not your buses can continue. Um, and, uh, so, yes.
Can I speak? If I may, she also oversees, um, you know, making sure that all of our drivers are in compliance with their licensing, their DOT exams, all of those things as well. Um, so, Miss Brew does, and, um, a lot of work for us. It would be, it would be devastating to try and find two people right now, um, to fill those roles. She does also interview all of the bus drivers as well and the bus parents, so she.
I believe she also, um, manhandles, well, I shouldn't say that. Uh, the state, the, the state inspections. You know, schedules them and takes care of all that, meeting with them and running, you know, working with them to, you know, uh, get that through.
Yes, so, and this is salary, and as was mentioned earlier, um, you know, salary plus fifty-five percent is really, so, to have another person with, you know, even if you were pulling on a, a dispatcher for fifty and a dispatcher or, you know, a director, this is still a tremendous cost savings for the district to, to just have her remain in this role, even with this increase.
So, I have to say that with our finances so up in the air kind of thing, that's where I'm coming from, is the money needed, we, we're still uncertain about, on money. Um, and nobody's saying that she doesn't do a great job because Gina's been with us for a long time. She's, she's great. So, it's sounding like we haven't paid her what we should have paid her, and, um, that's unfortunate that that, that that happened, but I have to say because of the finance situation, um, people are going to be losing jobs or taking cuts, and it's, it's one person.
I want to clarify, no one is losing jobs or taking cuts, and, um, I don't see that.
You just gave a list.
I don't, those are.
Didn't we just get a list?
Those are empty positions. So, no one's losing their job. Those are empty positions, and I think that's important because we do not want our teachers to be viewing this evening and thinking that they're losing their jobs or taking cuts. These are positions that are open, uh, but I, I respect everything that everyone's saying, but don't be penny wise and pound foolish, right? When you're looking at all of this, you do not want to put us in a situation where, um, so you have to decide. you have to decide where that is at a balance as a board, right? And I would say that with all the...when you have people that are taking on extra jobs and extra things, you've got to think through this in a way that we navigate through the system moving forward. And a prime example is when we were in deficit, way back 10 years ago when I started, you only had three people in the business office, and they suggested to have four. We did that because we knew what we needed to do to keep the operations going. That's why we're recommending what we're recommending to you, and the way that, as a team, we brought this forward.
I just have to say, if we don't do this this way either, we are looking at having to post two jobs, two. So, I understand what you're thinking of money and where we're at, but if we post two jobs at 67 and 50, we're at how much compared to 82?
Plus benefits.
Plus benefits. Like, I see where you come from on your points. I just feel like, in the same aspect, we are going to be spending at least double that to try to do two positions.
Madam President, I have another question for the administration.
Yes.
The question is, how much, if any, is Gina's salary paid for by the special ed?
We would have to get back to you. I don't believe they've done the transportation this year, correct? And so, we would have to look at how much is paid in special ed?
Or reimbursed by special ed.
And if we can put that also into...but some of her is in the GSRP grant, as well as there's a general ed, and I'm not sure how that general ed piece functions. They're doing it for the first time.
Okay. Just thought I'd mention it.
We have to share that with you. That's a very good question.
So, this $15,000 would be out of general fund, or not decide it because of the other?
It would be out of...there may be a...listen, the more you spend some, the more reimbursement that you get. So, there would be a reimbursement offset of this. That's what we learned too, right? That it comes the following year. That comes with special ed costs. When you spend here, you get the reimbursement. When you spend on transportation, you get that reimbursement. It's not full reimbursement. But now, there is some general ed reimbursement that wasn't here for a while, there's special ed reimbursement, and then there's GSRP reimbursement, all of which, I would assume that as we're doing that reimbursement, it would split between all of those, because that's what you're doing. And then, of course, there's some in general fund.
Anybody else? Okay, roll call.
Beaton?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
LeFromboyes?
No.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
No. Five seven...seven...I mean, five to two motion carries. It makes seven. Transportation summer help.
I move the Board of Education approve hours for bus maintenance, repair, and cleaning not to exceed $18,345 as presented.
Motion by Monica, second by...is somebody seconding it?
Support.
Support by Nate. Discussion?
Madam President, may I begin?
You don't...
Thank you.
Out of all due respect, we had all that conversation last week on Monday.
Uh-huh. But we have additional conversation coming this evening, so that wasn't there on Monday, which is why I just want to give a general piece here.
Okay.
We provided you with a list of the...as requested, of what they are doing in the summertime. And so, this is something that's been done every year. It looks like it wasn't brought in a memo. It was done through the business office at that point in time, but you can see all the things that have to be done with the detailing of the buses, painting of the buses, patching of the buses as well. So, I hope that that helps you see the work that these individuals do. Remember, this is getting us ready to pass inspections, is what they're doing.
I have a question from Monica. Is all of the stuff that is on the agenda tonight, is that in the budget that you presented today at 5:00?
Because we just rolled over the budget. We didn't add any increases, right? So, this would have been in here last year, this cost, so it would have rolled. The money for Gina would not have rolled.
So, this was in the '24, '25 budget?
That you did it all summer long, and we're capping it not to exceed this year. Yes, they did it last year, and the year before, and the year before that.
But that's not what I'm asking, if they did it last year. They obviously had to do it, or we went up passing inspections.
Right.
But my question was, is it in the budget? And is the stuff that we're approving tonight in the budget that we reviewed at 5:00 today?
Most of that is. So, the transportation summer work, that would be...the piece that was not, would have been the raise for Gina.
So, the '24, '25 budget included this amount?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, roll call.
Rete?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
LeFromboyes?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Gym floor maintenance. May I get a motion for the gym floor maintenance?
I move the Board of Education approve the refinishing of the gym floors and to add the painted lines for volleyball and basketball not to exceed $13,552.44 as presented.
Second?
I'm sorry, would you...how much is it?
Not to exceed $13,552.44.
Okay. That's what I thought it was, but I didn't hear the 13 part.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Monica, second by Heidi, for the gym floor maintenance. Discussion?
Again, my question is, is this in the budget, the '24, '25 budget that we just reviewed?
Yes. We rotate which floors we work on each year, but there were costs last summer for this work as well, so that is included in the budget.
I'm glad you're asking that.
Can I speak?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, just to be clear, a lot of these items that are on this agenda, we did take into consideration when we were doing this. That's where we gained a little bit of a buffer, so it would only add to...I don't want to say a savings if it wasn't approved. So, this is...this was taken into consideration.
Thank you.
I'm glad that you're asking that, because this is totaling $300,000, and then the curriculum on top of that. So, if this is already built in, we should probably be able to just...because it was planned for, basically.
Yes.
So, we can just move through this and not worry about if we're going to...it's going to fit in or not. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Fox?
Sorry. Well, you're going to be sanding probably down into the wood and re-putting the lines on, not all the time?
No, this is not...this is just gym floor refinishing. This is not sanding all the way down and putting the lines back on.
Okay.
This is just your waxes and pieces that come through there.
Because the concern that I was hearing from the meeting last Monday was that there's going to be additional logos put on the floor, and I just...I...
May I explain that?
Yeah.
It's...no, there's lines for volleyball and for basketball, so it can go in the opposite directions, and we can utilize our space more effectively.
But you're not going to put a picture of my dog on the floor?
Well, if we donate the floor to him, yes, if we rename the floor to him, but we just renamed it to Mr. Thomas. But, I mean, we could.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
LeFromboyes?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero Roosevelt roof repair.
I move the Board of Education approve the HVAC filter replacement at a cost not to exceed $11...I'm sorry. I move the Board of Education approve the roof repairs to be completed before the winter at Invest Roosevelt not to exceed $8,950.
Support.
Motion by Heidi, support by Monica, to repair Roosevelt's roof. Any discussion?
Why is it winter? Why isn't it...why aren't we doing it with...over the summer?
Before winter is the plan. I let Mr. Richardson make those plans about when it needs to be done. It just has to be done before there...it might get done in the summer. I think financially, it's also good to wait until we see if it's going to come out of the sinking fund perhaps, when we get those dollars in place.
Because I think at committee of the whole, we discussed that we were worried about damage occurring during the winter, so it just needed to be done before snowfall.
Have we expired all our funds in the sinking fund for school year?
We can't answer that yet. We're waiting to see where we are with the sinking fund. We just finished what we needed to for the budget today.
Can we get an update on that at the next committee of the whole, please? Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All righty, roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
LeFromboyes?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero HVAC filters. Motion, please.
I move the Board of Education approve the HVAC filter replacement at a cost not to exceed $11,040.15 as presented.
I second the motion.
Dang.
Dang. Really wanted that to court.
Kind of like Jeopardy, you got to get in there.
We should make these decisions.
Motion by Heidi and supported by Fox for the HVAC filters. Any discussion?
Nope.
We need clean air in our schools.
Okay, roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
LeFromboyes?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero playground mulch. Motion, please.
I move the Board of Education approve the installation of playground mulch at Web, Webster, Hoover, United Oaks, and the Ford Administration at the cost not to exceed $20,805 as presented.
Support.
All right. Motion by Heidi and support by Monica for the playground mulch for $20,000. Discussion?
Go ahead, Ms...
May I answer a question to you that you gave that I needed to get for you? So, it really is anywhere from 12 to 18 inches per Mr. Richardson. This is just giving us two to three inches of mulch. So, it's getting us back up to where it needs to be.
So, that's what I'm saying, did we have less than 12 inches that we need to bring it up?
Yes. We would...we have...because it starts fading and digging down, just like in our gardens. So, I just want to make sure that I did reach out and did find that information for you.
Thank you. That helps me make my decision.
Okay. Roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
LeFromboyes?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero bus purchase motion.
I move the Board of Education approve the purchase of a new...is it new or used?
Used.
A used bus for $73,497, plus the title and fees.
Support.
Motion by Heidi and second by Monica for the bus purchase.
May I answer some of the questions, Ms. Hinton?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I reached out to Ms. Brew, and she said, "I have the inventory of the buses. The reason for needing for a new bus is due to our buses getting older. We have a lot of breakdowns this year, which is getting to be very costly. We have two old buses, one which is often used for our field trips. Please let me know." And so, we have buses from age 2013 all the way up to 2020. So, this would replace one of those buses that perhaps also might not pass inspection this year. I hope that that is enough to help you understand.
So, the bus that's not going to...potentially not pass inspection this year, is the goal to sell that, scrap it? What is the goal with that?
I believe when I asked her that earlier, it's not worth selling. It'll probably be scrapped and used for parts.
Okay. Do we get money for the scrapping of it?
I will find that out for you. I would assume yes, but you know what we say when we assume.
Okay. And then, my next question is, because we're paying for this outright, and it's probably going to be depreciated, amortized over the life of it, do we have the cash flow to support the purchase?
It may be also out of sinking fund, depending on what happens. We'll have to let you know when we get that sinking fund amount.
So, last year, we bought a bus for 63, I believe, maybe 60...
Probably 69. I have all the costs of all the buses. The 2020 was 69,000. So, with appreciation of cost, the 75 is very appropriate.
2023? Didn't we just buy it last year?
It wasn't. Our newest...it was old bus as well. It's a 2020.
Okay. We just bought it last year. We moved it.
Yes.
So, if you are rolling over the cost, does that mean $69,000 is in the budget for next year, for '25, '26, because this is 73?
Yes. For the...yeah.
So, $69,000 was already in there because we bought that last year?
Correct. So, we just...we rolled over the expenses and took out what we knew weren't going to continue on for the year, and added what we knew.
So, we're roughly adding $4,000.
In a sense, yes. Well, I'm going to disagree with you respectfully, because the cost of repairing them will come off. So, in that fund also is the cost of repairing them as you look on your transportation. So, it should wash it out.
Okay.
Should is the key answer.
And we have nine buses, or we have nine buses?
We have nine buses. I effectively can answer that now.
Yeah, we're going to get rid of one.
We're going to get rid of one.
So, we'll still have nine buses.
So, we'll still have nine buses.
Don't clean the one we're going to scrap. Put it last on the list.
That was mentioned to me already, that if we're scrapping one, please don't clean it. So, I'm sure that that one will not be cleaned yet.
Okay, roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
LeFromboyes?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Can I get a motion for the Delta Network solution black hours?
I move the Board of Education approve the purchase of additional black hours to address technology concerns as we continue to improve upon technology at all schools in the district at a cost not to exceed $7,800.
I second the motion.
I already beat you.
Motion by Heidi, second by Monica. Mr. Fox, you lost. Discussion?
Time to go.
Time to go.
Time to go, yes. Discussion, any...anything?
I'm so sorry about that.
No. No discussion.
I don't think it's changed since Monday.
No.
No discussion, Mr. Wilkins. Roll call, please.
Fortress?
We didn't just add a school, so this is auxiliary gym. This is the outside bleachers. This is the softball and baseball bleachers at the high school, the softball, baseball bleachers at the junior high, and interior bleachers at the junior highs at a cost of a thousand dollars.
Okay, all of them.
Thank you for this, because I remember asking the committee, the whole, if it included all of them, so, thank you.
So it's only outside bleachers, not inside?
No, it's auxiliary gym at the high school and the gyms inside at the junior high. I apologize for not being clear.
So will he give us if there's, if there's repairs needed, will that come at a later time?
That comes through this report. This report tells you what you must do to repair it, yes.
So this is just the report?
This is just the report.
And when is this expected to happen?
I can't answer that, but I certainly will put it in my weekly memo to you guys on Sunday night.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Rattie?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Lefron Boys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. Can I get a motion for the Delta Network Solution Black Hours?
I move the Board of Education to approve the purchase of additional black hours to address technology concerns as we continue to improve upon technology at all schools in the district at a cost not to exceed seven thousand eight hundred dollars.
I second the motion.
Motion by Heidi, second by Monica. Mr. Fox, you lost. Discussion?
Time to go.
Time to go.
Time to go, yes. The discussion, any, anything?
I'm so sorry about that.
No, no discussion.
Yeah, I don't think it's changed since Monday.
No.
No discussion, no discussion, Mr. Wilkins. Roll call, please.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Lefron Boys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes, motion carries seven zero.
I thought I was the second.
You weren't, you lost.
I was.
You weren't, you lost. Try it this time. Teaching and learning summer projects.
I'm so sorry.
I move the Board of Education to approve the summer twenty-twenty-five professional learning and project proposals in the amount of thirty-four thousand seven hundred two dollars and fifty cents.
I second the motion.
All right. Motion by Monica, second by Fox. Discussion on the summer teaching and learning project, anybody? No, we're all clear on that? All right. Roll call, please.
Rattie?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Lefron Boys?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Motion for twenty-five, twenty-six curriculum purchases.
I move the Board of Education to approve instructional material for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for an amount of four hundred twenty-five thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars and eight cents with the ability to make adjustments for changes in enrollment and contract negotiation.
Support.
Support by Monica. Okay, motion by Heidi, but support by Monica to purchase the, all the curriculum items, it's a really nice list.
Ms. Hinton, could I make one statement for the community that maybe didn't hear? I want to make, we normally, if it's a repeat of things that we purchase, we don't bring it, again, in full transparency for everyone. We brought that forth so that everyone could hear the amount of curriculum that's bought for our kids K-12. If there's additional things, we will certainly bring them to you. So thank you, Dr. Dolmetsch, for a great list.
Well, let me just say there are more adjustments. So my apologies for that amount on the main part of the, the motion. It is really a total of four hundred seventy-three thousand one hundred and eleven dollars. So my apologies for that mistake. We had an adjustment last week, it increased for subject dot com.
Can you repeat it, four seventy-three?
Four hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and eleven and eight cents.
So, oh, sorry, can I ask a question?
No, yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I do want to point out that all of these are renewals of stuff that we already have. So we're renewing licenses or replacing workbooks, correct? Nothing new, except for this American Reading Company's secondary professional learning?
We had that last year as well, one of the additions, the differences this year is that for the American Reading Company, we are adding on our eleven grade materials. And with that, there would be some additional training that would expand to our eleven grade.
Dr. Dolmetsch, I believe that was already approved, correct, for the board at a different time? The eleventh grade?
No, that was not, that was part of this, this whole, yes.
So this is a huge chunk of money. Not that it's not needed, of course, we have to teach some something. But, so is there, I believe Heidi asked this last week, and you said just very minimal things would be coming forward for curriculum?
Correct, I think one of the examples they gave last week is, for example, every year we have to replenish supplies for science. And so that's a minimal amount, but we don't know exactly how much it is, because we always very thoughtfully have teachers' inventory, make a decision about what they need, and then it is the expert who does it. We also have a number of pieces here, much like I think we did in our budget too. We, I made sure to put in here what I thought the highest amount was going to be. And as we get our numbers in place, then most likely some of these numbers will be due to that. That would be, though, in those consumable pieces, like workbooks or materials. In terms of the licensing fees, that's going to be pretty standard, dependent on how many students we have. I do know, for example, one of the things that I noticed when I did the Quofer Curriculum Association, which is iReady, the number they quoted for advantage and license seems a little bit high, so I'm gonna have to go back and redo that and then pull the licenses down. So we really try to be very cognizant about what is our projection based on our enrollment numbers from last year, and then make adjustments as we move forward. Now that being said, as we know, it could be a little bit less, most likely it will, but there could be some areas that increase depending on our student enrollment.
I'm gonna amend my motion. I move the Board of Education to approve instructional period for the, instructional material for the twenty-five, twenty school year for the amount of four hundred seventy-three dollars, four hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and eight cents.
And I'll still support.
I like the four hundred and seventy-three dollars better, I just.
Big time.
All right, motion was amended by Heidi and Monica, is there any more discussion? I have just a question. Is this on our webpage of parents go under, is it an attachment if they go on our page under Board Meetings? So they could see.
Oh, under Board Meetings, yes, this is on, yes.
Yeah, so they could see what we, because that's a lot of money, and we need it all, just so they could see what we bought. Okay, vote, roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Lefron Boys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Uh, yes, motion carries seven zero. Ucaru, did I get it right? I practiced. Okay, any questions on this? We discussed it, do we need any comments?
To motion, I move the Board of Education to approve Ucaru train, the trainers recertification in an amount not to exceed one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Support.
Okay, April, April made the motion, supported by Monica, to, to the Ucaru purchase.
I have a quick question. So these are recertifications, are we, did we recert, did we certify more people, didn't you say that? We certified more people last year than we did this year, so this is actually less money than last year.
Okay, anybody else?
I thought, I thought when we trained you last year, that these, the trainers were going to be able to train future people, was that not the case?
We still need a renewal, recertification.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Beaton?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Lefron Boys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Uh, yes, motion carries seven zero. Athletic equipment and uniforms for fall twenty-five, motion, please.
I move the Board of Education to approve fall sports purchases not to exceed seventeen thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety cents as presented.
Is there a second? Okay.
Sorry, I was reading.
All right.
President, may I talk to the changes on the memo?
Okay, yes.
Okay, so this is all the same that was presented. In the meantime, we received information about football materials that they needed, which you see listed at twenty-three, twenty-two, and ninety cents. And I have some questions, like why do we have heated ball bags? You need to have those to keep them dry, keep them ready to go. So these are the items that was brought to us that they feel they need that was not on the list before.
So it went up by like three thousand dollars?
Twenty-three hundred, yes.
Okay, any comments or questions about this? All right, roll call, please.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Lefron Boys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Uh, yes, motion carries seven zero. Millennium Business Solution Copier Renewal Motion.
I move the Board of Education to approve the sixty-three month copier lease from Millennial Business Systems to address technology concerns as we continue to improve upon the technology at all our schools in this district at a cost not to exceed two thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars in sixty-six cents.
I second the motion.
All right. All right, motion by Monica and second by Darren for the Millennium Business Solution Copier Renewal. Is this gonna have the color?
Yes, would you like me to speak and explain? Yes, so this actually increases about by three hundred dollars a month. Our lease has been over since earlier this year. This is something that Brad and I had been working on before I left and just didn't bring forward. It will remove, we will slowly remove the color printers, which, then we will not have to pay for the toners in those color printers, which are very costly, over five hundred dollars each time you swap them out. And that color will be inside the copier. And we also will be able to do some codes in there about people utilizing them as well. So we believe this will be overall cost savings in the end, and look forward to Brad doing some data collection for us on that point.
All right, anybody else? Thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
Is this for just one copier, or is this for the whole district?
So this is for the whole fleet across the district at each building. So here where there's three copiers, they, all three would then get replaced with three color copiers. The high school has three, there'd be three replaced at the high school and so on. So this is all buildings with the exception of Invest.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, roll call.
Rattie?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Lefron Boys?
Yes.
Hinton?
Uh, yes, motion carries seven zero. Motion for the Touch Point Kiosk Service and Support?
I move the Board of Education to approve the purchase, renewal of service and support for our Touch Point kiosk to address technology concerns as we continue to improve upon the technology at all of our schools in the district at a cost not to exceed five thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars.
Support.
All right, motion by Monica and support by Nathan Becker? Any discussion?
I guess we're replacing the time clocks.
Let's, let's explain it for you, Trustee Fortress. Brad, go ahead.
Basically renewing our service and support that we have through Touch Point through July tenth, twenty twenty-seven. They are upgrades to the current time clock kiosks that we have. So this would actually swap them out. If we don't do this, then they're swapping them out throughout the year, which then is going to interrupt people being able to use the time clocks. And we already do have service and support on them, but this is just extending it an extra, I think it's thirteen months.
Mr. Wilkins, can you explain what they are? It's not like a time clock, it is, it's much different. I mean, it's not like.
It's a, yeah, it's a punch-in, punch-out system. I mean, you use your swipe card that you have for the buildings, it's mainly used by hourly employees to basically clock in and clock out.
How many are there? How many do we have?
Each building has two, so you're looking at about sixteen, seventeen.
Anything else, anyone? Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Rattie?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Lefron Boys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Uh, yes, motion carries seven zero. CTE purchase.
I move. Go ahead. I move the Board of Education to approve the one-time purchase of the CNC machines slash supplies for the Hazel Park High School woodworking classroom in the amount not to exceed six thousand thirty-three dollars.
Second. Oh, okay, motion by Monica and second by Heidi for the CTE purchase, and could somebody say what it is?
Yes, it is a CNC machine that cuts items, and I had placed that inside information for all of you. It is a grant purchase, and it'll be for the wood shop.
Yep, that's what I wanted people to know, it's for the wood shop. Any other discussion?
It's paid for by a career readiness grant?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want people to know.
No, good. All right, uh, roll call.
Rattie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Lefron Boys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Uh, yes, motion carries seven zero. State aid note, we need a motion, and then we need a discussion, Dr. Krupi, to explain it.
I move the Board of Education to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of a note in anticipation of state school aid as presented.
Support. Motion by Monica and support by April to have a discussion on the state aid note.
Great, thank you. Well, as we know, state aid is not paid in twelve months, and so when it stops, many school districts have to take a brief state aid loan to carry this through. As you know, we took a state aid loan mid-year last year of twelve million dollars in order to, due to the fact that the audit was not completed and going through. So it is our intention, we're gonna hope to wait till September to do this, that'll depend on our cash flow. This resolution today gives us the ability to go out. It has to be submitted to Treasury, it'll take about thirty days, and then we will go back and have that approved again, and we will need you to approve it when we actually take that note out. So this is just the first step that'll be sent to Treasury for approval. It is for seven million. We talked, we may not take all seven million. It was recommended that we go five to seven million, and so we went with the seven, and we will bring back to you the amount that we're actually recommending as we move forward.
So do we need the resolution as long?
Yes, please.
Do we need to read it? Post it, read it?
We should read it.
And then we post it, right?
Yes, it will be posted.
I believe we have to vote first and then read it, right?
Yeah, because we fill in then.
Yeah.
If somebody else could read it, please, my eyesight is not so good right now. I can read it. I have it here.
So.
Wait, didn't you just say we have to motion first and then read it?
Yeah, we have to vote and then have the votes into the resolution.
Didn't you motion?
Well, I did.
Monica motion and April second.
I, I have a couple questions. So we're paying the four million dollars off, you said, based on your notes?
Um, yes, so if we're talking about the former state aid?
Yes.
Uh, that's out there, which is outside of this conversation. It is our plan to pay that off in July.
In July?
Yes. One month early.
And then we're gonna take this out in September? Apply for it in August and take it out in September?
No, we have to apply right now in order to make the days to go through Treasury. It'll go through Treasury, we get approval, then we will work with them to get a closing date and we'll bring information back to you again. Hopefully, in our July meeting, we'll be able to bring that information. It may be August, depending on the timeframe that Treasury's moving.
We don't know the interest rate on this yet.
We do not know the interest rate yet.
I, I do have a question. So let's say miraculously, we don't have to have this money come September, do we get charged interest rate?
Well, we won't go for it then.
Okay.
Right, we just won't go for the loan. Just, this just gets us prepped and ready to go.
Is there a filing fee or anything associated?
Well, of course, you are gonna pay attorneys and, and filing fees at that time, not right now.
So we don't pay anything until we get them.
Okay.
Okay, so we're not voting now until we read, right?
Well, truly, normally, you read and then you go back and insert and vote. So you would skip over the, um, and I think that's what, what Mr. Garrett was trying to explain to us the other day. So you're gonna, you're gonna say, whereas under the terms and read through that and then you would have them, um, vote. You already offered it and supported it, so you have who did that and then you read through it and then vote.
Want me to read it? Okay. Uh, resolution authorizing issuance of a note in anticipation of state school aid. The following preamble and resolution were offered by Monica Rete and supported by April Beaton. Whereas, under the terms of section twelve twenty-five of Act four fifty-one, Public Acts of Michigan nineteen seventy-six, as amended the Act, the school district is authorized to borrow money for school operations and issue its note therefore, pledging for the payment thereon, monies to be received by it pursuant to the State School Aid Act of nineteen seventy-nine, as amended the State Aid Act, which note shall be a full faith and credit obligation of the school district and, whereas, the school district must either be qualified or obtain prior approval for the issuance of the note from the Department of Treasury of the State of Michigan, the Treasury, and, whereas, the school district has determined it is in its best interest to borrow an amount not to exceed seven million dollars to pay operating expenses and to issue a general obligation note to the school district therefore, the note, and, whereas, the school district also deems it advisable to authorize an authorized officer, as defined below, to accept an offer to purchase the note from an underwriter or bank, negotiate, approve and execute, execute a note purchase agreement or term sheet with the underwriter or bank and to approve various other terms and documents in connection with the sale and delivery of the note to the underwriter or bank. Therefore, it is resolved by the school district of the City of Hazel Park, Oakland County, Michigan, that one, designation of authorized officer, the superintendent is authorized and directed to take certain actions on behalf of the school district as described below. The authorized officer. That's a lot of words. Uh, two, borrowing authorized. Pursuant to section twelve twenty-five of the Act, the school district shall borrow an amount not to exceed seven million dollars for school operating purposes. The final amount of the borrowing shall be determined by the authorized officer prior, prior to the sale in an amount not to exceed the lesser of seven million dollars or seventy percent of the school district's twenty twenty-five, twenty-six state school aid, the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six state aid. The school district shall issue a general obligation note for this purpose in anticipation of twenty twenty-five, twenty-six state aid. Three, terms and conditions. The note shall bear interest at the rate or rates determined by an authorized officer. The rate or rates shall not exceed the maximum rate permitted by law at the time of sale. The note shall be dated and shall be due and payable on the date designated by an authorized officer. The note shall not be outstanding for a period exceeding three hundred and seventy-two days. I need a breath, sorry. The note shall be payable in lawful money of the United States of America. The note may or may not be subject to optional redemption prior to maturity. Four, pledge of state aid. The school district irrevocably pledges its twenty twenty-five, twenty-six state aid equal to the outstanding balance of the note, including accrued interest thereon, as security for repayment of the note. The school district shall appropriate a sufficient amount of the pledged state aid to repay the principal of an interest on the note. In addition, the school district irrevocably pledges its full faith and credit for payment of principal of an interest on the note. In case of the insufficiency of the pledged state aid, the school district shall pay the note as a first budget obligation from any funds legally available for such purposes. Five, negotiated sale, approval of sale and execution of note. The note shall be sold pursuant to a negotiated sale. The authorized officer is authorized to accept an offer to purchase the note from an underwriter or bank to be selected by the authorized officer and is further authorized to negotiate, approve and execute a note purchase agreement or term sheet with the underwriter or bank and to approve various other terms and documents in connection with the sale and delivery of the note to the underwriter or bank. The authorized officer shall execute the note on behalf of the school district. A negotiated sale was chosen by the school district instead of a competitive sale because it allows flexibility in timing the sale and structure of the note in response to changing market conditions. Six, Department of Treasury. An authorized officer is hereby authorized and directed to make application to Treasury for and on behalf of the school district for qualified status or for an order approving the issuance of the note, if applicable, and to pay any applicable fee, including filing for an exemption from the rating requirement, and to further do all things necessary on behalf of the school district to obtain such qualified status or order approving the issuance of the note. Seven, retention of note counsel. The law firm of Miller, Canfield, Paddock and Stone, PLC, is hereby appointed as note counsel for the school district with reference to the issuance of the note authorized by the resolution. The representation of the school district by Miller, Canfield, Paddock and Stone, PLC, as note counsel is hereby approved, notwithstanding Miller, Canfield's representation in unrelated matters of the Huntington National Bank, a potential purchaser of the state aid note. Eight, tax matters. The school district covenants to comply with existing provisions of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, as amended, that must be satisfied subsequent to the issuance of the note in order that the interest on the note be or continue to be excluded from gross income for federal income taxation purposes, including, but not limited to, requirements relating to the rebate, rebate of arbitrage earnings, if applicable, and the expenditure and investment of note proceeds and money deemed to be note proceeds. If applicable, the authorized officer is authorized to designate the note as qualified tax exempt obligations for purposes of the deduction of interest expensed by financial institutions pursuant to section two sixty-five B three of the code. Nine, conflicting resolutions. All resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of the, of this resolution be and the same hereby are rescinded.
Now we vote.
Can I just make one statement first? That is a good Hazel Park education there.
Can I, I just have.
I don't know what most of the words meant, but.
We didn't talk about comprehension. We're talking about.
I thought the same thing as lawyer Tom.
Okay.
So the note may or may not be subject to additional optional redemption prior to maturity. That means that if we pay it off, we self-pay out the interest, correct? If that's part of the loan.
It, this is the same, uh, loan that we just did. It's the same exact piece that you're approving, because this is through Huntington and through, um, Mr. Crowley, the legal firm. And so you, if you pay it off, you don't pay that interest.
Okay, 'cause it, 'cause it says may or may not be.
Yes.
Subject that. And who's our authorized officer?
I am.
Okay. And then my third question you already answered. Is this the same firm?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're, we're grateful that Huntington has agreed to do that because, again, so hopefully we won't have to do it next year, but we'll see where the world takes us in the next twelve months.
Wow, that was a multiple. Um, okay, we need to vote all in favor of the, uh, state aid note and borrowing seven million dollars. Uh, roll call.
Rete?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
The Frumboys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Uh, yes. Motion carries seven zero. Auditor engagement for twenty twenty-five UHY, um, motion, please.
I move the Board of Education to approve the engagement of UHY LLP to perform the twenty twenty-five external audit as presented.
Second by?
Second.
Heidi? All right, motion by Monica, second by Heidi. Any discussion? It's the same firm as last year, so.
And we were told that the committee of home, I mean, they're starting.
They'll be out for one day in July for planning and then they will do the audit field work the first two weeks of September.
And when's it due, Nancy? When's the audit due?
November first.
Thank you.
When will we see the audit? If it's due in September, will we see it in October?
It's due November first.
No, if it is due in November, typically, I think it takes a few weeks before we actually see the results, but we can get the.
Traditionally, it's been October. Traditionally, yes, that, that we would bring it to the October meeting. And hopefully, if the, this is the firm that you, I mean, we should do an RFP this year and get the most competitive firm, you may see it earlier because we'll be on the books earlier than, you know, normally in the summertime maybe coming.
Okay, um, that's discussion, roll call.
Rete?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
The Frumboys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Need a motion, please, for the student accident insurance.
I move the Board of Education to approve the comprehensive student athlete insurance coverage for Student Accident Insurance Incorporated for the, from the, from a general fund cost of $12,650 for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Support.
All right, motion by Heidi and second by Monica for the student accident insurance. Any discussion? Okay, uh, roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
The Frumboys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Motion for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six MHSAA renewal.
I move the Board of Education to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Michigan High School Athletic Association Resolution as presented.
Support.
Motion by Monica, support by Debbie for the renewal. Any discussion? Roll call?
Is there a fee associated with this?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
What was that, Heidi?
Is there a fee associated with this or is it just a membership?
No, uh, there is a, a fee, um, off the top of my head.
I do not see it on here, that's.
I don't see it on here either.
Um, this.
Uh, can we get back to, um, Trustee Fortress, uh, with that?
Okay, uh, roll call.
Sorry, real quick. It said that this, um, approving it does include that, um, oh no, that's the one I know, insurance man.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I don't see it.
I just don't simply recall, unfortunately, um, can I go with, because it's two hundred and fifty-page document and I don't remember that. Come on. We will get back with you.
Mr. Parkinson?
MHSAA is, uh, free. MAC has a membership fee, but membership to the MHSAA is free. That's the state organization.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Rete?
Yes.
The Frumboys?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
Anything free is a yes for me.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six superintendent memberships.
I move the Board of Education to approve the superintendent memberships for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year at the cost of three thousand and sixty-eight cents as presented.
Support.
Motion made by Heidi, second by Monica for the superintendent memberships for twenty-five, twenty-six. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
The Frumboys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Uh, yes. Motion carries, uh, seven zero. Uh, MASB membership renewal.
I move the Board of Education to approve the renewal of the school district's membership to MASB at a cost of six thousand four hundred, one dollars and forty cents as presented.
Support.
And this is for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, um, people, staff members.
Okay, motion by Heidi.
Heidi, what did you say? I'm sorry.
It's for seven staff members?
Okay, thank you. It's so hard to hear when we sit with this.
Sorry, I have the mic almost in my face.
Okay, uh, motion by Heidi and second by Monica to renew the MASB membership. Discuss, oh, discussion?
I don't, wait, I do have a question. I think the MSBO is for seven staff.
Yeah, seven staff. I'm sorry, yes, you're correct.
This is, this is your, um, if I may, this is for your coverage of all the things that MASB does for you and, um.
I was reading both, sorry.
I was, I just thought you were saying seven board members, so I was going with them.
Okay, seven board members.
I thought you were dividing it by seven. That's totally what she meant.
Totally.
That's what I thought too. Okay, uh, roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
The Frumboys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Twenty twenty-five, twenty-six MSBO membership renewals. Need a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the MAS, MSBO membership renewals for the listed employees, which is seven, at the cost of one thousand fifty dollars.
Support.
All right, motion by Heidi and second by Monica for the MSBO membership renewals. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
The Frumboys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Uh, twenty twenty-five MASE Fall Conference Motion.
I move the Board of Education to approve the conference request for the MASE Fall Conference not to exceed one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars as presented.
Support, anybody?
Support.
Okay, motion to, for the, the MASE Fall Conference by Monica and support by April. Where is that? I don't have it in front of me.
Traverse City.
Traverse City. That's where the school board train is this year too.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Rete?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
The Frumboys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Conference twenty twenty-five MAASE Summer Institute twenty twenty-five.
I move the Board of Education to approve the MAASE Summer Institute twenty twenty-five attendance for District Special Education Administrator, not to exceed the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Do we have a support?
Support.
All right, motion by April, support by Monica for the MAASE Summer Institute attendance.
Did you get it? I can try, Adam, still.
Oh, okay. You're still on the list, huh? Okay, any discussion? Are there, anything more? All right, uh, roll call.
Beaton?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
The Frumboys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Uh, board training.
I move the Board of Education to approve the board training as presented.
Support.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I wasn't added to this.
Motion by Heidi.
I did, but I didn't get your classes. That's why I didn't, ended up putting it on there on Sunday.
So with me added.
Can I al, I'm like going back and forth on this. Can I be added and decide for sure?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I amend my motion to, um, add, um, Heidi Fortress and Monica Rete to the list.
And.
I still support. I still support.
When is the discount? Do you give a cheaper rate if you wish?
July fourteenth.
July? April, you don't want to go?
I can't be in Lansing on the sixteenth. I have another conference that I'm scheduled for on that day. I do want to go, but this one will financially be impactful to me in other ways, so I must be at a different conference on the sixteenth.
Fair enough.
Okay, uh, roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Lepron Boys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Uh, yes, motion carries seven zero. Conference requests over five hundred dollars are up now.
I move the Board of Education to approve the conference request over five hundred dollars as presented.
Gosh, I didn't, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Monica, second by Debbie. I didn't look at the attachment, who said?
I just wanted to acknowledge that two of these are grant funded, it says, so...
And then the other one is required in order to teach A P twelve English.
Okay, good. Any discussion on that?
We appreciate your support.
Roll call.
Rattie?
Yes.
Lepron Boys?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Student Discipline Action Item.
I move the Board of Education to approve the student discipline as presented.
Support.
Motion by Monica, second by Debbie for the student discipline. I don't think we can have any discussion. Roll call.
Rattie?
Yes.
Lepron Boys?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Freedom of Information Act informational, and I didn't copy the list, somebody have, can you just read the names that requested?
Sure, we have five FOIA's that are here. One is from Jackson, Dryvergent, Verlessi, Oakland Press, and McGinnis.
Okay, all right, thank you. Superintendent report, great, because I have a long one.
Um, the staffing is, enrollment is in here for you, but I need to let you know it's the same as it was in May. June, often, we don't have, we don't see a change, right? But we are actively, if parents are watching tonight, we are actively enrolling here. Uh, we also will have enrollment available for the first couple days of summer discovery, where you can drop off your child and come on in and enroll at the school, both at United Oaks and at the junior high, so please come in if you haven't had a chance to enroll. What it helps us do is when you enroll, it gives us a count for classrooms, so if we have enough kids to move to a third classroom, we move, um, and we just, we want to make sure that we are spending the taxpayers' dollars in the wisest manner. In July, we will roll that over, and then we will take a look at, um, you know, where we are, and then, as you know, July is not accurate, August is not accurate, and then September, we, we see a big bubble, so we'll keep you updated on how that is, and it's important to us. I do have a list of some things. Um, one, I'd like to congratulate our board members for the M A S B award recognition this Wednesday, June eighteenth. Many of us will be traveling together. Beth Hinton has a Level Three Award of Distinction. Mrs. Lepron Boys has a Level Three Award of Distinction, and Ms. Monica Rattie has a Level One Certified Board Member Award and Level Two Award of Merit. It's exciting to see so many...
Heidi also has a Level Three, I believe.
I also have a Level Three.
I didn't get that on my sheet, so Heidi has a Level Three, and Ms. Rattie, I think your next...
I'm getting both.
Yes, is also, we'll go into next year's because it was after July first. So, great job to our board. Several of you, I will not board shame you for training, but I encourage you to take that training, it's great when the whole board gets it and you get another special acknowledgement when your board has gotten that training, and it's good for just learning together, so...
I have a Level Zero.
Congratulations.
I was not board shaming you.
Thank you.
I, I do want to share that I was really proud to represent you this weekend, on Saturday, at the Wade McCrea Scholarship at Oakland University. Our students each year for about the past six years have been involved being able to get scholarships there, and so if you have a three-point-o grade point average and you've really done what you need to do at school, you're recommended, and this is a full ride to Oakland University if you continue on that path through your senior year and that you do well on your SAT. So, thank you to the Promise Zone for the SAT training. I'm still waiting to hear how that went for us this year, but we are super proud. We had about ten students that were there, and I only hope to continue to see that grow. It was, it was very impactful, and we're working on those pictures. Summer Discovery, just so you know, we do start our summer school, and, um, we have, I'm going to do lunch and summer school together, and breakfast is being served. So, summer school is running, uh, from, uh, Monday, June twenty-third, and ending Friday, August first. Breakfast is served from eight to eight-thirty. Academics runs from eight-thirty to twelve. Lunch is served from twelve to twelve-thirty, and afternoon enrichment from twelve-thirty to three. This is all grant paid at United Oaks and the Junior High. Thank you to Ballmer, who's developed Summer Discovery. Many of us have benefited from that. And also, Meetup and Eatup is at Webb, the Junior High, High School, and United Oaks. Um, we do have Webb food that started already. You can get, um, if you are hungry, you can get breakfast or lunch, seven-thirty to eight-fifteen at Webb, and lunch is eleven to eleven-thirty, already started, so come on out, get, if you're eighteen and under and you need food, that food is available to you to all those places. So, you can also see it online, and if you are watching this and you don't live in Hazel Park, you can go track this, and these Meetup and Eatups are all over the state for you. So, maybe if you're up north in Traverse City, or you're visiting your friends in another place, or your grandparents, there's the ability to go all over the state for free food. Please do it, eighteen and under. Um, and if you're a student with special needs and still in a program, you can go twenty-six and under. So, we also are excited that there was a fantastic program done in Hazel Park, and so soon you will see some vehicles driving around with pictures on them that one of our fifth graders put on there, and so we're really excited to have that partnership with the city. I think it's pretty cool, and just wait, before you know it, check that out, that is our kids that are decorating, um, the vehicles at, um, at the city, so kudos for that. I think that is, that is it for me, contrary to my comment that I had a lot of really good.
Fundraisers?
Fundraisers, they're, they're on there for you. A reminder, the, the purpose of our fundraisers is, is not only to have them on there, but also so we can cross-check, but also to show the money that's collected and come back so that you have a point of check to make sure organizations are communicating, collecting the money, and that's a good tracking audit-wise as well, is to make sure those amounts come back, um, as well as at the end of the season, those organizations should also turn in. Anyone that has H P in their name should be turning that information in so that they're aware and that we are doing our due diligence as a school district. So, if you have H P schools or H P anything into that, as it relates to the schools, it is your obligation to return that back into us, and it's a good way. There's a lot of, um, funds that sometimes go missing or aren't followed through, and it just is a good check for us in our, uh, business office.
Where is the popsicle sale, most importantly?
That was done at the school.
It was Tammy's last day, it was, uh, right before we did Tammy's.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Retirement Day, the popsicles were delicious. He missed out.
Okay, um, request for future agenda items. And calendar dates, I'll just join that together because we're not meeting until July twenty-first, right?
Twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-eighth.
Okay, so you can add items tonight, or you can add them in the next three or four weeks. Public comment, up to public comments. Anybody wishing to speak? No papers? All right, close to public comments, and we're at board member and administration comments.
I have something real quick. Thought I'd get it in there.
Take it.
Um, I'd just like to thank the Technology Department for a wonderful job of the, uh, videotaping and recording and the audio that they're constantly doing on top of everything else that they do. So, um, you know, they're here right now, they're working hard, uh, beyond their hours. I'm sure they've been here since eight o'clock this morning, um, so, like many of you, and so I do appreciate all of your time and, and all of your efforts tonight, and it's just nice to have, have this, so thank you. That's all.
I do want to thank again Monica and Crystal, so I know we kind of rushed out of our first meeting because we all kind of wanted a little bite to eat, but, um, thank you so much for working so hard. It's really appreciated.
Thanks.
I'd like to piggyback on that, thank you, girls, very much. Um, and I also want to make another motion. I make a motion for the Hazel Park School District to allow the Junior Viking Program to use the district's facilities to enable the Junior Vikings Program to continue in operation. This includes, but not limited to, a secure and safe place to store equipment for a period of no less than five years, with the Junior Vikings insuring their equipment for damage or theft. No fees for facility rentals or custodial fees for a period of no less than five years, and the first opportunity to use the facilities as lo, as long as no other Hazel Park School event is happening.
Is there a second?
I support.
Discussion?
Um, I am kind of shocked because, not hearing this and not talking at the committee of the whole, um, and while I believe that's what we're doing at this point in time, I do believe that I shared as a clause containing that we should look back at custodial as a group and have a discussion to determine whether or not that we should do that. Our people are working overtime, and they're not necessarily wanting to work overtime. Um, I had to re-ask them to work, do it on, they, the Junior Vikings have asked for the next two Sundays, and we're getting people not willing to work on Sundays, and so I've asked them to move it to Saturday if possible, because maybe we can get more people, but I think, um, that there should be a conversation financially before you go into an agreement and, um, uh, moving forward with that, without looking at that long-term effect.
Well, we were in an agreement with the Viking, Junior Vikings, that we were going to commit with them, to partnership with them, and then all of a sudden, last week, we ended that. So, I think this is only fair that we give them the opportunity to, um, establish their, um, organization and move forward and try to do great things for the kids at Hazel Park.
I'm not opposed to saying that we have a partnership and want to help them. The issue that we brought up before, and Dr. Herbie had said she had talked Ed about certain buildings and things like that, that they could potentially use for wrestling, and Ed had mentioned to me before at our Promise Zone thing that, um, they could use Green Acres for practice and things like that, and he would have storage for them, so, um, I'm a little confused as to why this is that way, and this whole conversation today from other board members has been about saving money, cause if we can just not pay for our overtime on the weekends, that is all we're asking.
But we already committed to them. We committed to them as a partnership when we started this, and it was this big thing eighteen months, two years ago, where I came in with this check, and it was this, all this big thing, these are Hazel Park kids that want to play sports, this was our feeder program. I, so why would we not support the kids and pay for the additional overtime? It's minimal, out of good faith.
I can't answer if it's minimal or not yet. Um, that is what I was hoping to bring to you in July, in, as a conversation, as I had asked to do so, and not just include Junior Vikings, but other organizations as well. Absolutely, we want to support these kids. Um, I have not been able to get a list that they are fifty percent of our kids, which you have to make a decision as a board as well. We have to take away and step back and say, now we're looking at financial, is it, is it, who are the kids that are coming? Um, because many of those kids now are attending other schools, and so they were not able to share with me if they were at fifty percent or not, which I asked and asked that at some point that maybe they share. The other thing about storage is I, I think you need to be aware that when it comes to storage here, um, that means you also have to give keys to that individuals, and I don't think that is in our best interest to give keys, so every time they come in to get their items, they'll have to be somebody present and available to do so. And we were trying to ourselves work that out in my conversations with Ed, as I shared in my meeting minutes, and that he was going to look at something long-term for storage, but that he had asked this year we remain with that storage, and so I just think, um, that it, it, there should be some conversations before you rush into a five-year plan.
Well, I think there should have been conversations last week, too, when we decided to dissolve from them.
I, I think what I'm confused about is that last week, I, I want to be clear that I do think that, that the school district should continue, I mean, both in kind and with space, to some extent, to support the Junior Vikings. There, there's no doubt in that. There's two things here. What we did last week was we voted to remove two principal individuals from their board, and then to change, uh, the principal contact of the five oh one C three to a member of the city's Parks and Recreation Department and have it not be the superintendent of schools. There, there wasn't, there, there was no, there was no divesting or, um, you know, cutting off of the partnership or something. I think we've set a strange precedent of just making surprise motions at the very end of meetings instead of adding them to request for agenda items so that we can have discussion and we can review data. We're being repeatedly asked, and I'll include last week in this, we're, we're being repeatedly asked to, to make these decisions based on no data, no information, nothing in front of us to review. I would love to see maybe a draft of a memorandum of understanding, given the change in the bylaws of the Junior Vikings, to have something very much codified between the school district, given the space, um, the cost, the expectations of overtime, things like that, because those are real. I mean, we, I'm not comfortable right now just saying, somebody needs to work on Sundays or, or they're, they're doing that, you know, there, there's a way that we can present this as a working document, that we can have something be a handbook, um, an official memorandum of understanding that is signed by the school district and the new rep, or the, the board chair, excuse me, of the Junior Vikings. We, we don't have anything to review right here. This is, it's just being tossed in front of us with no data, no support, no nothing, and it, these are starting to feel like tricks, and, and it's starting to feel sort of like a gotcha of, we said we wouldn't do this, we're not going to. We have seen emails back and forth all week where there's been discussions about the junior high, uh, moving to Longfellow maybe when that building has some, some updates in repair so it can function as a community center as it was supposed to be, given the state of Michigan grants. Like, I, I think it's just really disingenuous to say, hey, we said that we're going to totally separate from the Junior Vikings, and that's what we voted on, which didn't happen. Um, and all of these things, where they're going to store their stuff, the insurance that's required, um, hashing out with the, the new athletic director, who is going to be on site, or who is going to be the point of contact for the Junior Vikings, something like that, that, that needs to be written, it needs to be a plan, it needs to be something that we can read and review, and I mean, we just gave three dates in July that we're scheduled to be here. There, there's no reason that we can't work with the athletic department and the city to put that together.
Their season...
And vote on something that's real, instead of just some statements that are made off the cuff at, at the end of a meeting. That, I'm not comfortable voting on that because that was more appropriate as a request for an agenda item and a directive to put something together to review and vote on...
You can always make a motion.
Than it was to make a motion.
I, I would like to, to do something for the community and then make a statement to this as well. The K twelve athletics was something we agreed to, to the sport, we talked about when Tom came in, and then I thought, wow, the Junior Vikings are a great feeder program for those pieces, then Ed came along and said, let's do it together. We did it on, on our piece, and we talked with you guys about this happening, and then the wrestling and football program said, the wrestling said, hey, we already have this, let's add that on. It was always, um, the purpose, which is why I think a conversation or a call to me ahead of time, I could have explained this, is that these parents take this over by themselves eventually, so it's moved off our books now. Of course, we would collaborate if they have over the fifty, fifty percent, if you guys say all Junior Vikings, no matter where they go to school gets that, that was what I had already said I would bring next month and, and have us start talking about it. However, um, it is always, it is the tension in the conversation I had with Ed is to eventually, they will go off on their own and parents would run it. It's about us building it. I don't see that as a five-year piece, and so perhaps I would again ask, um...
I said no less than five years.
I would, I would, but no less than five years. That's, that means that...
That's longer.
That's longer than maybe what we need to do it, and so, again, and to also collaborate storage when they've already said that they eventually would get their own storage is important because there's been things maybe you don't know about that have happened with storing those items that have caused some friction, so I'm really looking at just doing it in a nice way, that's why I'm scheduling the events, trying to make it happen, and then we will bring to you the actual cost of overtime so that you can have some of those conversations about whether that is a lot or not. I actually frankly don't know the cost, and when we're talking about nickel and diming, um, staff members versus this, I think we need to look at the whole picture and come up with a plan about what you would like to do as a board.
Again, Hazel Park Dance Team also has students that are on the dance team that do not go to our schools, so I mean, the motion's on the table.
I would like to say the Hazel Park Dance Team is actually a member of our negotiated contract, so that is different than the Junior Vikings.
And their girls are very minimal, they definitely have way more than fifty percent.
And I believe you've changed that also so that can't happen anymore going forward, and I believe we lost two of them today, so, uh, but it is part of a negotiated contract, Junior Vikings is not, and now is run solely by the city and the parent group with the hope of that the parent group will be able to build this to what we want it.
But we built it and we committed, and all I'm asking is for us to obligate that commitment until they get on their feet and able to do that.
I just feel like, I, I, I'm not opposed to saying yes or no at the moment, what I'm saying is you're asking for a lot of things, and you're asking for us to pay the overtime and everything else, um, when if, for some reason, they had to go to a different place, they'd be paying anyways. We don't know if fifty percent of the kids are ours yet. She's asked for that, we have not gotten it back. All I'm saying is I would rather wait until July, so we have all the information in front of us. all the information in front of us. Ed can probably chime in on some of it. Like I would rather have all of it than vote now.
Well, it's on the table.
I agree, you know, listen to April's point. We didn't absolve our involvement with the Junior Vikings. We made a couple of key changes. And I think across the board here, we all spoke how we wanted to continue our involvement with the Junior Vikings and work with them collaboratively in the best interest of the students and the, and the facilities and to make sure it worked, you know, everything within reason. You know, you have to schedule time and space for all of our athletes, you know, all of their athletes. I don't, I don't think anybody here on the board wants us to cut ties with the Junior Vikings. I just think we need to have conversations about a plan going forward.
And all I'm trying to do is make a motion. So I-
I think that the motion is to secure that the ties aren't broken because it wasn't a partnership and we dissolved the part of serving on the board. But I think that we want to secure that we're still with them and still involved. And I mentioned to Dr. Groupie when I met last week, our schools, everything in our schools come first. However, I want Junior Vikings to come second. Our old board policy said that we were to work with organizations that supported kids as much as possible. So I think it's just a motion to secure that we're not going to leave them high and dry.
But she had very specific-
I know it wasn't the motion.
Madam President, if I may, I am all for the motion except for the overtime piece. I think that an entity should pay a little something, but I think we need more time to get the data. So that way we know what we're actually getting ourselves into for overtime. Because I know there, I, I've seen the emails that he's willing or they're willing to pay something for-
They have no money. We gave them $400 when we got our financials to them. $400. That was their startup for this year. They have no money and we're expecting them, that we were supposed to collaborate with them to fund overtime.
But I just, I don't want to make it for a five-year, I don't think it's a good idea to do five years.
Okay, then, then three years. Let them get established and let it move over to the parents.
Because in three years, I'm not-
Give them the opportunity to give them the three years.
In, in three years, I'm not on the board. I, I don't think-
You are on the board in three years.
Am I?
You still are.
Oh, well.
I would, I would like to be able to-
Not if I get recalled.
Since I'm the one that had the conversation with Ed on Friday regarding this and we had some understandings, I again would ask that you consider tabling this till July so we can have a conversation. We can bring Ed to your meeting if you would like, but that we bring to you the data as we share that we, because whatever you do for this group, then you need to be able to do it for another group if they develop items as well. And so-
If another group has students that come to our schools, then yeah.
That's, and that is part of your facility usage, which is why I asked us to review the facility usage in the, at the next meeting and have these conversations.
So if I may ask the motion maker if they could table the motion until July? That's my ask.
When is this season over?
Uh, the season hasn't started yet.
It's, they're starting.
No, it's not.
Seven on sevens.
But that's not part of their-
What this is, is seven on sevens. The season will start later in July. And so they're not using our facilities for games. In August, I believe will be the first games. But we haven't done that yet. They, in good faith, as we said, they gave me two more dates and I'm working on it as we-
What are the two dates?
Uh, this Sunday and next Sunday, which we will not be able to support. I asked them to move to Saturday and I texted both of them and got no response yet to Chris Johnson and Don McGinnis. So we cannot do Sunday. We do not have custodians or concessions that are willing to work. Because it's Sunday night from 5:30 to 9:30. I would guess that none of us want to do that on a Sunday night either before work. And so I asked them to move it to Saturday. I believe that they need to talk to the league in order to change that.
I wholeheartedly agree with supporting them. And I don't think anybody here is, is against supporting them in any way. But I just think that it needs to be structured so that it makes more sense for a long-term commitment.
I would like to be able to prepare the information to you formally and look at our rental, as I, I talked about last month. But we can bring you some costs. I've, I've not been here long enough. I don't know what the costs are.
So are you okay with tabling it until July? And we need to have a serious conversation and come back with details.
So this is July 21st? Tabling it to what day in July?
Well, we have July 21st, 22nd, and 28th. We, I can, when Bev returns from her vacation, much deserved, then we can talk about which meeting because we also talk about, we need to talk about which policies are being read at those dates. I think one's coming on the 28th, one's coming on the 21st. And so we have to look at what those agendas will be for the Committee of the Hall, but it would be at one of those meetings.
So their football games start in August. Does anybody know when they schedule them?
I, I would like to bring all of that information back to you when I bring that information to you in July. I really, I-
I'm just saying, I'm just worried that they have to schedule them and that I can't. For this coming fall season, normally we schedule in advance based on-
I am willing.
I'm not receiving-
I feel like Mr. Johnson has done a very well job emailing Dr. Groupie and all of us on request. So if it comes to that and he says, hey, these are the dates they want us to have home, he can send us an email like he has. He's done a great job at doing so and I appreciate it. So I feel that he could do that and then we can discuss that as well.
I remind you that you said policy and we do the scheduling. And so what I would ask is let us bring you items for policy with the cost to make a determination if you would like that paid for. In the meantime, I have not charged them anything, nor would I until we can have the conversation in July.
I just wanted to, if they had to schedule, I know when I managed, when I managed a million soccer teams and hockey teams for my kids, we always scheduled like two months out and you, you had to take your dates that you had your field available with you.
I've not received any requests yet. Now, there was some emails that I think you saw that said that maybe some requests for this information happened before, but I can tell you that in the 10 days or so that I've been back, I have promptly responded. I do not have a list of football dates. I certainly will take that and I will bring that to you and we will check to see if we don't already have football or soccer or band on there and work with them.
Correct. I'm saying we need to do a reverse. We need to give them a list of available dates for our fields.
Oh, it's, it's not the best way. I would again allow us to do the scheduling that works for us in a school district. And they will look at the games and, and get back with us because it, that's a relationship that we have down here. If this is way on the dance floor, please let us do it. And then we are not charging them in the meantime until you have a conversation in July.
I, that's why I just wondered when they had to do the scheduling because normally you have to take your dates with you. That's all.
Yeah, they schedule within their league and I think that's what's not done yet. So it's like the, the league that the Junior Vikings play in hasn't even finalized their league schedule yet. So there's not much to bring back at this point.
As soon as they do, I will communicate that in a Sunday and let you know how it's going so that you know. But, but again, please let us do that scheduling in place and bring back a suggestion to you. I don't even know what the cost is. It might not be worth it. It might be $5,000 and we go, that's not worth it. I just don't know yet the cost.
Okay, I'm okay tabling it if we have a understanding that they are not charged until this is brought up again.
That they are not being charged at this point in time until it's brought up because I do not believe that that would be appropriate, which is why I asked to speak about it in July. So thank you for giving us a chance to work through that.
Does the second-
Do we go with the- You motioned, Darren, to table it?
No, um, she, Heidi motioned, she would table it. And then who seconded it?
Heidi, so I'll, I'll second it again.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor of tabling, no, roll call.
Yes. Tabling it.
Tabling it.
With no fees.
We're not charging them fees, trustee Fortress.
Okay, so we start voting, go ahead. Jamie. Fortress?
Yes.
Lafran Boys?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yeah, I look forward to discussing this in July. I think that sort of having something codified and put to rest will be really beneficial. And I, I mean, even personally, I cannot understate that we all understand the importance of the Junior Vikings to the children and that there is absolutely no one up here that wants to take that away from children. Happily yes, to discuss in July.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Tinson?
Yes. Motion carries 7-0. Now, anyone else wishing to comment? I have something, but anyone else?
Um, I would like to just quickly, outside of this meeting, see that we've talked a lot about budgets today. And that the state of Michigan legislature has still not approved a budget and will optimistically, hopefully, do so by their own deadline of June 30th, but that does not look promising. And would remind anyone that is here or that is watching that the legislator, legislative body is proposing what they are calling per pupil increases, but are actually some, some strange money moves that would very detrimentally affect the ability of schools to operate specifically related to student mental health, to their facilities, and to behavioral issues. So if you are so inclined to please contact your representatives and let them know your thoughts about school finance, encourage them to support a positive school budget, one that benefits children, and that will trickle down to students in Hazel Park.
Do you guys have anything? Happy summer.
Happy summer.
Hi, anybody else? I hope you like sitting up here. I like everybody sitting up here because it's everybody that does the hard work. And so I think that it's appropriate for all of you to be sitting up here. So I have, in light of the results of the investigation, the board agreed and announced to the community, we would implement a measure to further support Dr. Groupie's team. Their role is to help us with a plan of assistance in our finances. Tomorrow, there's a Zoom conversation with the Financial Advisory Services Company. And Monica and Heidi have volunteered to participate in that conversation to see what that involves in helping in our finance department. I think Mr. Miller's probably, I think he's finished, but will be. But anyway, it's part of the plan that we all voted on. So we'll have that discussion tomorrow with that company. And that's all. I have great summer, great graduations, very lot of success.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.